Let me see, several of us, all of us, okay. April, are you ready?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:15 PM. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the City of Emeryville, serving as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting and the subsequent meetings to this meeting will be conducted pursuant to California Assembly Bill 361, which waives certain provisions of the Brown Act during the COVID state of emergency. The City Council, the successor agency, and our other boards will make findings every 30 days that the following factors still exist, that the COVID state of emergency is still in place, and that it is in the best interest for the health, safety, and welfare of the public, our staff, and the council to continue meetings via video or teleconference. Members of the public are still welcome and encouraged to participate in our meetings and may do so one of several ways. You can join us via Zoom, and if you wish to give public comment, use the raise hand feature on the Zoom bar, and we'll call on you at the appropriate time. If you're joining us by the telephone number provided for in today's agenda, you can press star nine on your phone, and your hand will be raised for us to see at public comment. If you'd like to submit comments either during or in advance of the meeting, you can do that by going to the City of Emeryville's website, going to the Council Agendas page, and there's a link in the middle of the page that says, "Submit online speaker card here." You can enter your comments for any item on the agenda, and the clerk will read those items into the record at the appropriate time. This time, I will ask if the clerk will please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bauders.
Here, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the Redevelopment Agency.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Welch to approve this agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Are there any ex parte communications? Seeing none, now is the chance for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item within the scope of the Redevelopment Agency agenda can use the raise hand feature, and we'll call on them to comment at this time. Seeing no hands, did we receive any comment cards?
No, we did not, Mayor.
Okay, public comment is now closed for the Redevelopment Agency. We'll move to the consent calendar. Are there any members who wish to pull or comment on anything on the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move so.
Oh, I'll second.
Motion by Member Welch, second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Before I adjourn the meeting, I have a question for the city attorney. This agenda does not contain an AB 361 item on it. Is the position of the city attorney's office or staff that we do not need to adopt a resolution for the Redevelopment Agency to have this meeting remotely next month?
That is a good question.
Mayor, if I may?
You may.
It's Sherri. Hi. We are going to have that item on the October 4th agenda, because that will be within the 30 days from the last time we did it, which was September 6th.
Okay, thank you so much, Sherri, and thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for being ready to find out why we almost had a problem, I thought. Okay, so with that, Madam Clerk, the time is 7:18 PM. The meeting is adjourned. Okay, and I will call to order, the time is now 7:19 PM. I would like to call to order the City of Emeryville's regular City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. Madam Clerk, please note that all council members are present, and as was stated in the prior meeting, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act under AB 361. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by Member Donahue to approve agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye, thank you for approving the agenda. We have special orders of the day, and... Let me see, one of our honorees here. So, our first special order of the day is item 4.1. It's a proclamation in recognition of Sharon Wiltshire's contributions to the Emeryville community and ongoing efforts as an artist and as an arts advocate for over 30 years. And I would like to welcome, from the public and the attendees' space, is Sharon Wiltshire, and I'm going to read this proclamation today in honor of her. Whereas Sharon Wiltshire served on the City of Emeryville Public Art Committee for over 30 years, initiating the Art in Public Places ordinance and its eventual expansion to cover residential development, after launching the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts annual exhibition and serving for nearly 40 years as the community liaison for the Emeryville Artists Cooperative, beginning in 1983, and whereas Sharon Wiltshire was elected Chair of the Public Art Committee for her entire membership due to her charming, calm leadership and broad and deep relationships in the community; and whereas the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts, an annual month-long exhibition of local artists, first held in 1987, was initially conceived as an event to recognize the city's support of the Emeryville Artists Community through the purchase of the Emeryville Artists Cooperative. It quickly expanded to embrace the entire artist population of Emeryville and the broader community, and annually Ms. Wiltshire secured a building owner-partner to host the show, exhibiting over 100 artists' work from throughout the city each year. And whereas Ms. Wiltshire's advocacy for the city's investment in public art and artists residing and/or working in Emeryville predates the establishment of the Public Art Committee and the Emeryville Annual Art Exhibition, with Ms. Wiltshire working as the community liaison for the Emeryville Artists Cooperative, beginning in 1983, facilitating the cooperative's incorporation as the 45th Street Artists Cooperative in 1986, and helping increase the 45th Street Artists Cooperative's impact on the community by participating in the inaugural Artists in Schools program, beginning in 1983. And whereas in the decades that Ms. Wiltshire has served as the Chair of the Public Art Committee, the City Council has been aided in its efforts to expand public art investments since 1990, when the city commissioned its first public art installation, Peninsula Telltale, by Anita Margrill, starting a collection that has grown to over 70 permanent artworks placed throughout the city, establishing Emeryville as a leader in supporting public art. And whereas over the same time span, private developers, through the Art in Public Places ordinance, have installed over 230 publicly accessible art pieces on building facades, lobby walls, and within landscape spaces and courtyards throughout Emeryville. And whereas in 2006, the city began the Purchase Award Program, whereby the city purchases artworks shown in the annual Emeryville Celebration of the Arts exhibition, initiating an ongoing collection of works by local artists and installed in city facilities. And whereas in 2009, the city initiated the Bus Shelter Temporary Art Program, now entering its seventh phase, which displays local artists' work in four bus shelters in Emeryville. And whereas the Purchase Award and the Bus Shelter Temporary Art Programs are nearest and dearest to Ms. Wiltshire, as these programs feature the works of Emeryville residents and employees, highlighting the breadth and depth of talents in the community. And whereas in 2017, on behalf of the 45th Street Artists Co-op and the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts, Ms. Wiltshire partnered with the city and other cultural leaders to form the Rotten City Cultural District, one of just 14 state-designated cultural districts. And whereas, under Ms. Wiltshire's leadership, the city commissioned the Public Art Master Plan, launched a small phone-guided audio tour of the artworks inside City Hall, and installed banners in City Hall featuring the works of 30 local artists. And whereas the city's reputation and identity as the center of art and innovation is, in large part, a direct result of the work of Ms. Wiltshire. And whereas so many of the buildings and artwork in Emeryville, as well as the community itself, have been touched by the tireless efforts of Ms. Wiltshire. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John Bauders, as Mayor of the City of Emeryville, and on behalf of the members of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, thank Ms. Sharon Wiltshire for over 30 years of dedicated service to the city and the broader community, proclaimed on this 20th day of September 2022, at a regular meeting of the City Council, by the mayor and the City of Emeryville. And I would just like to give our applause in a virtual space, and I would like to ask April if you would please invite Ms. Wiltshire to join us up here in the virtual dais. Good evening, Sharon, and I would love to just offer you the opportunity to say anything you'd like to say now.
Well, thank, first of all, just thank you, and thank you so much. You know, for almost 40 years, I have been reading council and planning commission agendas every single month, and that's what I did this month, too. So, I had my very emotional 15 minutes around this particular agenda last week, and Sherri can attest to that, because we had a conversation. And I'm just deeply honored by this recognition tonight, and I thank the City Council, the city staff, and especially my Public Art Committee colleagues, your art team. Forty years ago, a textile artist who had owned a small craft gallery with her sister on the East Coast moved to Emeryville and landed at the Emeryville Artists Cooperative, and that's what set all of this in motion. My involvement in the purchase of our buildings, guiding our youth art program at Emory, the annual art exhibition, and the crafting of a public art, public art policy guidelines and an ordinance, and it's all connected to the co-op. But, you know, just not, I mean, my thinking was not an ordinance that would just be on the books, but one with purpose and standards and broader goals, and I threw myself into it 110%. And now, all these years later, so many great programs, accomplishments, awards for your Art in Public Places program. Eventually, this even led me to my own public art consulting in the private sector, and the opportunity to work with artists Stephen DeStabler and David Ireland, among others, and even to write a public art master plan for Mission Bay with my colleague Leah Levy. The PAC's in great hands with our committee, or I guess now I'll call it your committee, with Amber as staff liaison. Their great work will keep on coming for the city and the community. I'm really so happy to have been a part of shaping this program, will always have my support. You won't see me on second Thursday evenings, but I'm not going anywhere just yet, so once again, I just, I thank you, I just thank you so much, thank you.
You're very welcome, Sharon. Any other council members who wish to give comments? Member Welch?
Sharon, I just wanted to say, you know, it's been an honor getting to know you over the past few months through the Public Art Committee, and really, what you've given Emeryville is such a great gift that will be able to be enjoyed by generations, and, you know, sometimes, because we have a higher renter residence population, folks come and go, and they don't really get to make a big impact, but just your service to the city is just a testament to how we have such great residents who really give their all and truly love this city, and just so, I just wanted to thank you personally here, publicly, with my colleagues and our attendees, thank you so much for everything that you've given to this city.
You're most welcome, thank you.
Okay, well, Sharon, we will, when we get to council member announcements, I will have announcements about an event that we just read a little bit about coming up, so we will, I'm sure, hear from you again as we talk about the Celebration of the Arts later in this meeting, but thank you for all your service. I would just resonate everything that Member Welch said, I think she said it very well, and we look forward to giving you this proclamation in person in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That will move us to item 4.2, and members, it is a proclamation, and it is for another special person who is already seated at the dais and has, I see your friends in the background there. And I would like to, I would like to give a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville honoring and commending City Clerk Sherri Hartz, CMC, upon her retirement from the City Clerk's Office of the City of Emeryville after over six years of continuous and outstanding service for the city and over 21 years of outstanding public service. Whereas Sherri Hartz began her city clerk career as an administrative secretary and assistant to the city clerk for the City of Santa Rosa in September of 2001, and whereas Sherri transitioned as administrative technician for the City of Santa Rosa in February of 2004, and whereas Sherri became Chief Deputy Clerk of the Board of the County of Sonoma in November of 2007, and whereas Sherri became the city clerk for the City of Nevada in August 2010, and whereas Sherri worked part-time as the Secretary Treasurer for the Marin County Council of Mayors and council members in July of 2014, in conjunction with her tenure in the City of Nevada. And whereas in July of 2016, Sherri Hartz was hired as the city clerk in the City of Emeryville, bringing with her many years of public service experience, as well as the esteemed designation of Certified Municipal Clerk through the City Clerks Association of California and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And whereas since her hiring, Sherri has distinguished herself as a vital and valued public servant of the City of Emeryville, handling multiple general and special elections and city measures, and whereas Sherri initiated and revamped the city's records retention schedules and entirely revamped the city's records management process. And whereas Sherri assumed the role of Public Information Officer for the city, overseeing the website's Newsflash, Twitter, YouTube, and LinkedIn accounts. And whereas Sherri assisted the mayor and the city council in the proclamation of community celebrations prior to council meetings in 2018, that showcased and appreciated members of the Emeryville community, as well as coordinated the city's first-ever Rotten City Block Party in August of 2019. And whereas Sherri was integral in the city's swift response to transition to virtual meetings for the city council and the city's multiple committees in response to the county-wide emergency shelter in place orders due to the COVID pandemic in March of 2020, thus allowing the city to continue to function in its public meetings. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that we hereby extend our sincerest appreciation to Sherri Hartz for over six years with the City of Emeryville and its citizens, and over 21 years of public service to the community at large. And be it further resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville, and on behalf of the city council and the people of Emeryville, we wish Sherri Hartz the very best in her retirement and her future endeavors, proclaimed on this 20th day of September 2022 by the mayor of the City of Emeryville. And if you would all please join me in thanking Sherri for her amazing, her amazing, amazing work here. I would like the opportunity to say something, and I had the pleasure of saying this at Sherri's retirement event a week ago, but for those who are new to the city or whose memories are dusty from COVID, I would just share that prior to COVID in 2018, when the before times, when we met in person, I endeavored on something that year, which was these community celebrations, and I know I told this story at Sherri's retirement event, so staff may have heard this already, but when I set off to do that, I sat down with the city manager and the city clerk and the city attorney. I said, you know, I really want us to elevate and support and recognize the businesses and residents that make our city great, and that year, we had a Women's Recognition Month, we had one for youth, we had one for pride, we had a number of them, but the very first one we did that year was Honoring Black History Month. And I went and I spent a lot of time with African-American pastors and clergy, talking about bringing something authentically African-American and resembling the authentic black voice into the city council chambers to honor this event appropriately. And I was super nervous about doing it right, because, you know, when you're trying to elevate another, another community, it's often possible that you can get in the way of doing that properly, and, you know, I remember, I remember the Baptist Church Choir Director saying, he goes, he goes, let me just get this straight, there's going to be a white man who's going to raise a flag that symbolizes black power at his town hall, and I said, well, I'm not going to be the one who raises it, but yes, we're going to do that. And I was really nervous, and might not have been able to tell that day, but I walked into the city council chambers, and it was impeccably done. Like, the flowers, the colors, the flags, Sherri just made it such a welcoming space. We received so much positive feedback for that event, and that was something that transcended that event. I walked, I told the story, I walked into the Pride Chambers on the Pride event, I opened the back doors, and she's in there with this little rainbow feather crown, and she had a boa on, and there were just Pride flags everywhere, there was like, it was amazing, and I was like, who is this woman? Who is this magical person that really, like, the council, the city council town hall is not a place that Sherri worked, she made it a home. She, she lives in that home, and she's made it a home that welcomes other people, and I personally feel that that is the job of government, is to welcome and include people, and I'm just immensely grateful to you, Sherri, for sharing in that spirit and always turning our town hall into a place where people feel welcome. So, that is me. I would like to invite others, if they'd like to say something, to go ahead and raise your hand and do that now. Or I'll, Scott, go ahead.
Well, I've been in this town a long time, Sherri, and, you know, my entire adult life, and you have really made exactly that, our city hall, home to me and to, I believe, our whole community, and I just, you know, I really appreciate the work you did, and I just felt you had such a competent, steady hand in everything you did that made a difference for me personally. Not being a natural politician and/or council member, you really helped get me through some challenging issues, and I really want to personally thank you.
Thank you.
Sherri, I would invite you, if you have anything you'd like to say, you have the chance to do that now.
Well, I don't have any prepared remarks. As you all know, I like to get on here and wing it, so I will just say, thank you all so much, thank you Mayor Bauders for the kind words and remembrances, and I realized when I was planning to retire from the City of Emeryville, I'm not just retiring from Emeryville, but I'm retiring from my whole career, and so it was nice to remember back on, on the history of that career and how I kind of started at the bottom and worked my way to the middle, and so it's been great working with you all, and whenever I've worked with anybody as a candidate, I always sort of think of them as mine. So, all of you are, were mine, except Scott and Diane, you had just gotten on when I started here, so just thank you so much for the, for the nice proclamation, and the party the other night was lovely, and also thank you to Vice Mayor Medina for coming up and talking to me about the block party, because that was really hard to do, but it was really fun, and so that was also a fond memory, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Sherri. All right, members, we have exhausted proclamations for the evening. Let me pull up my agenda again, give me one moment. Okay, well, move us to agenda item number five, which is announcements of commission and committee vacancies. April?
I have nothing new to report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Item six is council member's special announcements or reports on meetings in attendance. I'll ask first if Vice Mayor Medina has any meetings that she'd like to report? No, Member Welch? Member Donahue? Member Martinez? Okay, I'm going to let it go around the horn, and I'm going to pass it as well. Oh, Member Medina, you have a comment?
We did attend the initiation, the groundbreaking for the riprap going in, which I feel like deserves a comment, that was an amazing event, which three of us were at. It would feel inappropriate to not honor the riprap groundbreaking and acknowledge all the hard work our Public Works Department, especially Mike Roberts, has put into making that happen, and the fact that we got to drive the excavator.
Thank you for recognizing that, and I'll also use this opportunity to thank several people. I would like to thank Amber Evans and Nancy Humphrey and Matt Anderson and Josie for all the work they did this last week, Climate Action Week, we have a number of environmental programs and events, and several of us joined them at the Shoreline Cleanup Saturday morning, and Miss Earth California, who is a real person and has a real sash, she came out and picked up trash, too, she let me wear her sash, it was amazing, I felt beautiful for about 30 seconds, I got a photo, and then she took it back, which is a very pageant queen thing to do. But we had, on Friday night, there was a panel at the Public Market, I want to thank Oxford Properties and Stasher Bags for sponsoring this, and I want to thank in particular two residents named Alexandra Underwood and Joey Rose, who are local artists, who have been part of a project called Pangaea Seed, which is raising awareness through art about oceanic health and endangered species. They had participated in an art mural project called Sea Walls a number of years ago in another location, and they were able to secure this art mural event in Emeryville this year, so we have, I believe, 15 or 16 murals, they're, all of them are almost completely installed, I think there's one left to be finished around the city, they have various depictions, and there was a panel, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service came, we had artists on the panel, I joined the panel from a policy position, and about 100 residents came out to the Public Market to hear the discussion, and then there was a walking tour the following day, and we will be putting together a urban hiking map for anyone who wants to walk and tour all the art murals that were created through Sea Walls once they're finished. So I just want to thank all the people associated with that work and all the artists who have lent their creative talents to making our city a more beautiful and environmentally-informed place. So, I lied, I did have something to share. City Managers Report, Adam.
Very quickly, and I want to keep the meeting moving, but I want to let the public know, and obviously the council's aware of this, we are actively recruiting for a city manager, the council working with Ralph Anderson Associates is working hard to fulfill that mission. Secondly, the, your city staff has been meeting with the five council candidates, holding informational sessions, we've held two so far, we have another one scheduled later this week. I think it's important that we're working with the council candidates to make sure that they're informed of how the city actually operates. Thirdly, kind of important for those swimmers, the pool heater at our swimming pool that's been down is now working, and tomorrow, the public can enjoy swimming laps again at our pool. Thought that was important, to share that at the, at the, at the council meeting here. And then, obviously, we're all sad to see Sherri leave, happy to see her retire, but I also wanted to make it known that April Richardson will be the acting city clerk, as obvious from the last two meetings, she's been serving in that role under Sherri's guidance, so welcome April as your acting city clerk. And then, lastly, kind of a big deal, the South Bay Front Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge has been selected to receive the 2022 American Society of Civil Engineers San Francisco Section Award for Outstanding Structural Engineering Project. Big deal, you guys should be very proud of that accomplishment, obviously, a lot of accolades to our Public Works Department and the team, but I thought it was worth sharing this really outstanding recognition that the City of Emeryville has received. Thank you, Mayor, that's the end of my report, happy to answer any questions of the council.
Thank you, Adam. Are there any questions for Mr. Politzer? Okay, seeing none, we'll turn back to the agenda, and that will be at item number eight, which is ex parte communications. Members, please take a review again of the agenda, and if there are ex parte communications that you've had with an applicant on any of these items, ask you to state those for the record when I call on your name. I'll start with Member Martinez.
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Member Donahue?
Nope.
Okay, Member Welch? Okay, Vice Mayor Medina? Okay, I have, on item 11.1, the Public Market, I, item...
Yes, all the same ones as you.
I was going to say, I gave you the chance. It's okay. On item 11.1, I have met with the Public Market and Oxford Properties, as well as Wareham Development, and that would be my report, and it sounds like Vice Mayor Medina concurs and shares those.
I have also met with those people.
Okay, that will complete the ex parte communications report. That will move us to item nine, which is public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on the agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment for something not on the agenda tonight or on the consent agenda will get three minutes to do so, and you can use the raise hand feature, if you're joining by phone, you can press star nine. I see no hands raised. April, did we receive any comment cards?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, thank you. Public comment for the agenda is now closed, and we'll turn to item 10, which is the consent items. Members, before I entertain any motions on the consent calendar, item 10.7 contains a resolution related to... Related to an item we just discussed, there's discussion about giving a recognition, but one of the things that the city had previously done, Member Patz had requested a ad hoc committee back when he was serving as mayor to develop a citywide policy related to naming public facilities and putting plaques in facilities that were buildings. There is a request and a recommendation from the Public Art Committee to have a physical recognition for Sharon Wiltshire's work in the Bus Shelter Art Program, to be installed at a future art building that would be hopefully constructed at some point in the future for us. And prior to approving that request from the committee, we felt it was advantageous to revive that committee since Member Patz left before the work of that committee was completed. I was the other member of the ad hoc committee, and if it would be okay with the other members, I'd like to nominate the vice mayor to serve on that ad hoc committee for putting forth a policy with me. Member Medina, would you accept that nomination?
I would.
Okay, is there any member who objects or would like to substitute that recommendation? Thank you, members. So at this time, I'll, is there any other member who wishes to pull any item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that concludes the request... item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that concludes the request I made to amend the resolution in 10.7 to fill in the blank.
I'll move the calendar with Item 10.7 with my name in it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. A motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Council Member Welch, to approve the consent calendar, adding Vice Mayor Medina as the second member to the ad hoc committee on naming policies. Please call the roll.
Council Member Donahue?
Aye.
Council Member Martinez?
Aye.
Council Member Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders?
Aye, thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. We have one public hearing tonight. That public hearing is 11.1. Marketplace Redevelopment Project Amendments to the Plan Unit Development and the Preliminary Development Plan and Development Agreement. And I will turn it over to Meru Desai.
Good evening, Mayor Bauders and council members. I'm Meru Desai, project manager for this project. So this is a consideration of approval, public hearing for amendments to the Marketplace PDB and the Development Agreement. Next slide, please. So this is the approved PUD PDB that the council approved back in 2008. And since then, the commission has approved several FDBs and construction has begun. Next slide, please. So as you know, Parcel C and D are already constructed. On Parcel A and B, there are existing entitlements. For Parcel A, it's a residential development. And for Parcel B, it's an R&amp;D or research and development building. And there are no existing entitlements for Parcel F. In spring of 2021, this site acquired a new owners and Oxford, it's the Oxford Partners, and they proposed a change to their proposals on Parcel A and B. So instead of residential and R&amp;D, they are now proposing only R&amp;D and of course, some parking. In order to accommodate that, a couple of amendments need to be made, both to the PDB as well as to the Development Agreement. Next slide, please. So the new proposal that the Oxford Properties have proposed is, like I'd mentioned, about 420,000 square feet of R&amp;D space with some ground floor retail, as well as a little over 700 parking spaces. And this project has been reviewed by both the commission and the council several times, starting fall of last year and continuing to summer this year. Next slide, please. This is, you'll be familiar with this. This is the proposal that Oxford is proposing at this time. And this is the view. As you can see on your right-hand side, that is the garage building. And on your left-hand side is the R&amp;D building with a little plaza in between and the pavilion building. This is, the applicant is in the process of further refining it. And it is scheduled for approval by the Planning Commission next month. Next slide, please. And this is the view from the east. Next slide, please. So we are here today, as I mentioned, the commission approved, recommended approval that the city council approved amendments to the PDB and the DA. So today is the council's first reading of the PDB and the DA amendment. And it will be followed by second hearing on October 4. And like I've mentioned, the Planning Commission will be doing a hearing on the FDB, the actual buildings for Parcells A and B, at their meeting next month. Next slide, please. So like I've mentioned, currently, there are two existing entitlements at the marketplace that have not yet been built. 167 residential projects on Parcel A and an R&amp;D building accommodating 150,000 square feet on Parcel B with some retail space and parking. The PDB shows a residential tower on Parcel A, but the conditions of approval of the PDB allow conversion to R&amp;D users, provided that there are at least 10 townhomes on Parcel A. As no residential units have been proposed on Parcel A, an amendment to the PDB is needed to this condition that requires townhomes to be built. Next slide, please. So this is the condition that needs to be changed. And this is the amendment. So as you can see, what this condition does is that it transfers the requirement of building townhomes from Parcel A to Parcel F. Next slide, please. This is more for height clarification. We are proposing a clarification of the heights from 120 feet to 175 feet. Next slide, please. I'll explain that in a minute. So this is the approved PUD plan. And the height right next to the stairs is 175 feet. And height here is 120 feet. The R&amp;D building is approximately located here. And this is where the plaza is. So in effect, and the proposed height of the R&amp;D building is 162 feet. So it's essentially transferring this 175 feet a little bit towards the north. So just for clarification purposes. Next slide, please. So there is also an amendment to the DA. There's a section that stipulates in the DA that the Parcel A shall include 18 affordable units. And as I mentioned, no residential units are being built. So in order to build the revised proposal, the DA needs to be modified to remove this obligation. The removal of this obligation will be made in conjunction with the following changes. Remittance of $20 million to the city's Affordable Housing Fund. Commitment from the applicant to support any application to secure affordable housing tax units. An agreement to pedestrianize Market Drive south of 62nd Street between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. seven days a week. Next slide, please. So certain findings need to be made for the PDB amendments. These are the seven findings. Next slide, please. And there are two findings for the DA amendment. STACK and the commission believe that these findings can be made, and they have been outlined in your STACK report. Next slide. In terms of environmental review, an EIR was prepared back with approval of the PUD in 2008. And there is a SECO section that provides that once an EIR has been prepared, no subsequent or supplemental EIR is needed if there are no substantial changes either to the project, and there are no substantial changes with respect to the circumstances under which the EIR was first prepared, and no new information of substantial importance has emerged since the preparation of EIR. An environmental checklist was prepared and attached to the STACK report that confirmed that no new EIR or supplemental EIR is required for the project. Next slide. So that concludes my presentation. The Planning Commission at their meeting last month recommended that the council adopt the two, actually, ordinances approving the proposed amendments to the Marketplace PUD and the Public Market Project Development Agreement. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. The applicant does not have a presentation, but their team is here and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Meru. Are there any questions for Meru or staff? Or is there a request from a council member to speak or hear from, speak to or hear from the applicant? Okay, I see none. And so there is not a separate presentation we'll receive tonight. There are two sections to this agenda item. I'm going to open the public hearing. The time is 7:53. The public hearing is now open. Here you hear, all who wish to come and speak on the matter before us in Item 11.1 will have three minutes to do so. And allow me to pull up the participant list again. Members, the public wish to comment, you may raise your hands if you wish to speak. April, did we receive any written comment cards for Item 11.1?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay. And seeing no, hands raised. April, the time is 7:54, and I am closing the public hearing. And I will turn back to members. Is there anybody who wishes to discuss these items? We've had the benefit of discussing these items over several study sessions. I want to thank the Vice Mayor. And I want to thank the council for being such a collegial and cohesive body in granting the Vice Mayor and I the ability to go and work with the applicant on this. I, as one member of the council, feel really good about these changes to the Development Agreement, about what that will bring in in terms of financing for affordable housing and other bike and pedestrian-oriented opportunities for this space. So I want to thank the council for their support in allowing us to reach this point. And I want to thank Oxford and City Center Realty for working so closely with us, as well as Wareham, who was a stakeholder in this process. Is there anyone else who wishes to discuss the item? Vice Mayor Medina?
I just want to express that I think through this process and negotiating this, you know, amendment to the Development Agreement, one thing our city has shown is that we have a very clear sense of our self-worth as a city. And I'd like to really recognize Mayor Bauders for really sticking to that. This is a fantastic place to build that has a ton of value. And if we are going to be allowing development or changes to plans, the city should be compensated in some way for that so that we can continue our other priorities, which definitely include affordable housing. I think that resolute sense of our value for our civic space is reflected back to our residents. And it's just such a pleasure to work with you all in a council that reflects those values.
Very well said. Thank you. Council Member Martinez?
I just want to appreciate both of you. It's just a love fest here. But we're successfully able, because of your diligent work, to leverage the benefits from this property to make that whole neighborhood better in a very cohesive way. And I just get more excited the more that happens in that neighborhood. Courtney's lucky enough to live there. So it's, it's just, it's incredible what we've been able to build upon to improve the entire city. So my gratitude to the mayor and the vice mayor for getting, rolling up their sleeves and getting into it with all of the involved parties.
Thank you. Member Welch?
I just wanted to echo Member Martinez's comments. I'm very excited about these changes. And since I live in the closest vicinity, we all live pretty close to one another. But being able to walk out my door and being able to experience these changes as they are coming about is very exciting. And I just appreciate the work of both of you. And being able to see it unfold as a newer council member, I mean, that's an exciting thing to see happen. Like, what happens if you need to make changes to a development agreement? What does that look like? And so thank you for making it actually very clear to someone like me who's coming in with very little experience with this level of municipal development.
You're very welcome. And your excitement is also very appreciated. There's no further discussion, members. There are two items that we need to take in sequence. Item 11.1 is an ordinance that would amend the Marketplace Redevelopment Project's PDP-PUD to transfer the requirements of the 10 townhome units. Is there a motion to read this ordinance by title only?
I am so moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion to read by title only has been made by Member Welch and seconded by Council Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Council Member Donahue?
Aye.
Council Member Martinez?
Aye.
Council Member Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders?
Aye. Mr. City Attorney?
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting an amendment to the Marketplace Redevelopment Project Plan Unit Development Preliminary Development Plan, PUD/PDP, to transfer the requirement for 10 townhome units from Parcel A, referred to as the Shell Mound Building in the approved PUD/PDP, to Parcel F, referred to as Rental Pad Number One in the approved PUD/PDP. And to change the maximum height on Parcel B from 120 feet to 175 feet, APN numbers four, 49-1556-15-16 and 17. Secret Determination Environmental Impact Report for Marketplace Redevelopment Project certified by City Council on January 15, 2008.
Thank you very much. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I move approval.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion by Member Donahue?
Second.
And a second by Member Welch to approve this ordinance. Please call the roll.
Council Member Donahue?
Aye.
Council Member Martinez?
Aye.
Council Member Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders?
Aye, thank you. That ordinance is approved. And Item 11.1.2 is an ordinance of the City Council. This relates to amending the Development Agreement for the Public Market Project and removing the Parcel A residential component in exchange for a monetary contribution of $20 million and other affiliated changes. Members, is there a motion to read this by title only?
I move to read by title only.
I'll second.
Motion by Member Welch, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina. To read by title only, please call the roll.
Council Member Donahue?
Aye.
Council Member Martinez?
Aye.
Council Member Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders?
Aye. Mr. City Attorney?
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting an amendment to the Development Agreement for the Public Market Project, also known as the Marketplace Redevelopment Project, to remove the Parcel A residential development obligation and to provide for a monetary contribution of $20 million to the city in exchange for removal of the obligation to provide 18 affordable housing units on Parcel A. And other related amendments, APN numbers 49-1556-15-16-17 and 24. Secret Determination Environmental Impact Report for Marketplace Redevelopment Project certified by City Council on January 15, 2008.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance itself.
I moved.
Okay. Motion by Member Donahue?
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Medina. Please call the roll.
Council Member Donahue?
Aye.
Council Member Martinez?
Aye.
Council Member Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders?
Aye. Motion passes. The ordinance has been adopted at first reading. Members, that will take us to Item 12. Item 12.1 is a request for direction of the City Council of the City of Emeryville on exemption of certain businesses, B occupancies, and new restaurant construction in A2 occupancies. And a proposed Energy Reach Code Ordinance amending Chapter Eight of the Emeryville Municipal Code to amend the 2022 edition of the California Building Code standards. And I will welcome Nancy Humphrey.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. And good evening. Thank you, April. So we're here tonight to discuss some potential elements of an upcoming Reach Code ordinance that will be coming to council in October, November for your consideration. The what? Next, please. As a reminder, the California Building Code is reissued every three years. And last year, you passed an all-electric new construction Reach Code for residential occupancies. That was tied to the 2019 code, and it will expire at the end of this year. So what we are, next, please. What we are talking about now, as directed by council, was to take a look at how to make Reach Codes that would cover all new construction. So the all-new construction, being all-electric, is the basis of the proposal that we are working on. The proposal, the proposed ordinance that we're working on is based on a template developed by an engineering firm, TRC, which has been hired by East Bay Community Energy to develop a template so that as many jurisdictions as possible can share basic elements of a Reach Code to make it easier for the, for the building community. Next, please. We, we have talked about in the past, this is about new construction only. It does not apply to existing buildings. It does not apply to tenant improvements. So that's important to remember when considering next steps. Next, please. So, so the basic concept is, any new construction has to be all-electric. As we talked about last year, we do have a few exceptions built in for projects that are sufficiently through either the planning, zoning, or building permit processes, right? So they get grandfathered in. We had also previously discussed exempting elements of the requirement for certain occupancies. for certain occupancies, life sciences and laboratory occupancies, manufacturing and hazardous. We're requesting direction on some other potential exemptions in addition to these. Next, please? So this request came from stakeholders who stated that when they're building labs in Emeryville, most often, they're being built before the tenant is identified. So they're being built as B occupancies, business occupancies, and not as lab occupancies. And that that's kind of a routine way to build lab buildings. So the stakeholders requested that B occupancies intended for lab use be exempted equally with lab occupancies. So that's one question I want to get direction on from you today. Then the next question, next, please, April, is should we exempt restaurants and food service occupancies from the all-electric requirement? We have not addressed this before. Last year, when we were talking about potential Reach Codes, our proposal for commercial properties was to have two potential paths, one of which included gas and one did not. This year's proposal doesn't offer that second path. It only offers exemptions for specific reasons. So as Mohammed said today, we're not special. This is something that a lot of cities are looking at and doing, both have done for the 2019 code and are looking after the 2022 code. So I do have a little bit of information about this issue. Next, please? There are many advantages to restaurant electrification, to both to staff, for cooking, and for cost. Next, please? There are also challenges. There's some learning curve for staff. The cooking may not work for all cuisines. And there are initial cost disadvantages, or there may be initial cost disadvantages. So next, please? What I am looking for today is direction on these exemptions, on B occupancies, whether they should be treated the way L occupancies are, and on restaurants and food service. And I would like to note that two representatives from TRC, Farhad Farman, who you probably all remember, and Avani Goyal are on the line, and as is Erin Kim from East Bay Community Energy. So if you have technical questions or legislative-type questions, we can get help from them as well.
Is that the conclusion, Nancy? Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Members, I would like to call for public comment, and then we can ask technical questions if we have them. Members of the public who wish to comment on item 12.1 will have three minutes to comment. Please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom bar or press star nine if you're joining us by telephone to comment at this time. Okay, I see one hand raised. April, for three minutes, I'd like to recognize the phone number ending in 1235. Good evening. Go ahead. You have to unmute. There you go.
Good evening. My name's Matt Sutton. I'm with the Restaurant Association. And I appreciate the discussion that you're having here about electrification and restaurants. And we certainly appreciate the city's action on climate change to date. The lion's share of our membership really are those independent chef-driven restaurants, those concepts that natural gas and fire for cooking is so important to. Fire, as you can imagine, via natural gas, has traditionally been a tool to facilitate the art of cooking for so many neighborhood restaurants. And so we do think it's important that you have a discussion, and we would ask that you would exclude that from a natural gas ban. Restaurants that use natural gas, you know, are really doing it for the practical aspects. You know, it's a tool for menu development. And many cuisines and certain ethnic dishes do take a certain type of cooking, which chefs largely believe natural gas assists in doing. It is true that there's technological innovation, certainly. But that has limits. That's not quite where it needs to be. It's generally the feedback we get. I know there's experts that will say that there is sufficient alternatives. We tend to find that those are usually not restaurateurs or, you know, few chefs, few and far between. So it is advancing, but it's not there yet. And we would just ask you to consider it as a tool for restaurants. And we do think that enabling future restaurants to have natural gas does help sort of push things towards the independent chef-driven restaurants that we'd like to see more of. So we don't take a one-size-fits-all approach on this. It's really the best way to go. We also don't really have any sense, nor have we ever seen any data or study that would suggest how much emissions would be reduced if you were to eliminate commercial kitchens via, I'm sorry, if you were to eliminate natural gas cooking in commercial kitchens. In any case, I did submit a letter late, but definitely support what you're talking about here and would definitely like to encourage that you do strongly consider exempting restaurants from this. And we'd like to be a productive partner. We share the overreach involves of climate change, but we also do think that the natural gas bans can have a negative impact on future restaurants about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person I'd like to, I see Avani Goyal's hand raised, so I will recognize Avani for three minutes of public comment, please.
Can you guys hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. This is to reply to the comment. I'm from TRC team, who is a consultant to East Bay Community Energy. Thank you for providing the comment on the restaurants. We do understand that there are certain cuisines that require gas appliances. However, we do have studies that have shown some data on how much emission savings they can have. They should be publicly available in next month. Having said that, we have also seen that there are some cost disadvantages. We see that it is expensive and it's not cost-effective as of now. So until we find it to have minimal cost impacts, we do have a pathway to exempt it from this requirement, if that's where the city is heading. But just want to say that we do have data on emission savings, and we also have some case studies on how many different cuisines have been able to use electric cooking appliances, even in like professional restaurants in Florida and other places. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any of the members of the public who wish to comment? Can we lower the hand for the phone number, please? I don't have co-host abilities right now. Thank you. Okay, I see no other hands raised. April, did we receive any written comment cards?
Yes, Mayor, we did.
For not more than three minutes, read those comments into the record.
Okay, this is from Jeff Sears. "As you know, Wareham has been an active participant in the discussion of Reach Codes in Emeryville, and specifically those Reach Codes as they relate to research, business, and buildings, the sector we have focused on here for nearly 45 years. You and the city have generally been very diligent about keeping us and other stakeholders in the loop as these considerations progress. However, the issue being considered at council tonight came out of the blue without the sort of advance notice which we had hoped to occur based on your past practice. Nevertheless, we have come to be aware of the issue that is before the council tonight and have recommendations we wish to make. We and others provided lots of meaningful input in your initial stakeholder reach-out sessions to suggest that lab buildings have very unique circumstances that do not readily allow practical full electrification. Lab users and lab business can and do operate in buildings that are officially classified as B occupancies. They do not need to be L occupancies and very often are not. Indeed, the majority of our life science campus in Emeryville is in B occupancy buildings, since L classification did not even exist in the time, excuse me, even exist in the code until, say, at least 10 years. We could certainly share a lot of much more granular information about B and L occupancies and how they relate to research spaces and tenants, if that would help your deliberations. We think it would be quite important for Emeryville's Reach Codes to not disqualify B occupancy buildings that will be used by research tenants. I do not think you need to be concerned with developers that developers will pretend they are building lab buildings to be able to use natural gas, only to then lease them to traditional office tenants. We appreciate council's consideration of this recommendation that impacts a very important business base in Emeryville. We would appreciate it if our recommendation is shared with council tonight." And that's the end of the comment, Mayor.
Thank you, April. Last call for public comment. Seeing no hands, public comment is now closed on item 12.1. And I will turn back to the members for discussion. Remember, Donahue, I recognize you.
I see this as a two-part decision. I think that, well, the public should know that new construction in this proposed B-class buildings that could be used for labs would all have the electric chases for future electrification over time as equipment is electrified for this kind of specialized research facilities. And I am supportive of the B class getting the exemption for this because the life sciences really require one-of-a-kind and unusual equipment that often is built in such low volumes that electrification is going to take some time. And I think it's important for our culture to have research science supported going forward. It's our, we will, our planet requires it, so that's necessary. However, I have a different opinion about restaurants for new construction. The new induction cooking equipment really is much more controllable and of a higher order. I just want to point out that a James Beard Award winner, Rema Seal, did some demonstrations for East Bay Community Energy using induction cooking for her recipes. And there are many chefs that are adapting and are likely to continue to adapt in the future. The gas into a new construction building raises the price of the building because gas lines require all kinds of additional code requirements, and the actual cost of the building is higher. So the real estate value for a new restaurant will actually cost the developer more money to have gas go into it. Also, gas ends up generating so many more issues. It generates our fire department being more involved. It's a more inherently dangerous product than just electrical. The gas also causes a greater need for ventilation. So the greenhouse gas effects of having to have more air pulled into the kitchen to keep air quality at an acceptable level, it just augments the problem with the architecture being efficient for greenhouse gas production. And I think that the cities around us have, the larger cities of Oakland and Berkeley have seen this for new construction for restaurants to make sure that they do not have gas for all of these reasons. And our existing gas locations are the majority for restaurants right now. So I don't think we're, we'll be in a problem for, we'll be causing a problem going forward. So I feel that we should not exempt new construction for restaurants for gas.
Thank you, Member Donahue. I'd like to next recognize Member Martinez.
Thank you. I just had some clarifying questions. I think I've kind of answered for myself just by going over the staff report again. But just to clarify, this is for new construction only, and this is not regarding renovations or pre-existing restaurants. So I guess my question is, if there's a pre-existing restaurant and it were to change hands or change cuisines, change ownership, and it has natural gas, then, and they make substantial renovations inside, would they have to electrify?
No, not in this proposal. No. So tenant improvements are not covered, and only new construction. So all the existing buildings in town that have gas could still have restaurants that have gas.
Okay, very good. And the other one is more of a philosophical approach to how these Reach Codes are being looked at by our surrounding cities. Have they been passed like full sale, and then the book is shut on them? Or is anyone getting more stringent as they go along and reevaluate what is happening with development in their cities?
Well, that's a good question. Oakland just recently came out, I think it was last year, with its all-electric. And it is across the board any use. So it hasn't had an opportunity or a need to move forward. I spoke with staff there. They don't have a lot of new construction of restaurants. They're pretty built out. But as far as the staff I contacted knew, they have not had any requests for exemptions, you know, on a case-by-case basis. Berkeley, as you know, had, has a two-pronged approach, one for land use and one for new buildings. And so they did, they have moved forward in kind of a stepwise. But their first step was no gas for anybody.
And where is Berkeley at now with labs? Because they do share that lab corridor with us.
Yeah. I asked them specifically about that big new lab going in by Aquatic Park. And it is all-electric by permit. The staff kind of left it open that maybe somebody was going to ask for a change, but that has not happened. That is an all-electric lab.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, I support the exemption for lab space for the same reasons that I, Member Donahue, articulated. I think I'm going to come down a little bit differently on the restaurant issue, even though I can very clearly see your side. I think obviously, all, you know, gas-free cooking is healthier for those that are breathing. Then it is safer, it is cheaper to build. But I do think fundamentally, we have many restaurants, many cuisines globally, that do rely on direct flame cooking techniques. And I'll note, Rema Seal did that demonstration on Chukchuka. I've also been to Rema Seal's restaurants, and I've pulled up that still at Diafa, Jacklyn and Square, and I have watched them slide those pitas under the direct flame as they puffed up. So if we want to talk about practice versus like goals, there's a giant gap. In order to cook ten-door style food, you need heats that are higher than what induction cooking can provide. Like, there's some basic facts of cooking techniques that you can't really get around here. And Emeryville is vastly accelerating. We are densifying. We're adding new things all the time. I would never say we're built out, even though we're 1.2 square miles. I think we are creating a more vibrant local environment. And I don't want to preclude us from having some more exciting cuisines and restaurants and more of a local culinary scene because we've chosen to make things more restrictive. I think this is a very small and narrow use case, and it has real implications on the way that people do cook and conceptualize restaurants. And so for that reason, I'm going to support the exemption, but I also fully respect and understand coming down the other side of this.
Thank you. Member Welch, do you have any thoughts that you'd like to share?
I mean, I echo Vice Mayor Medina's comments. I mean, on a personal note, it was challenging for me just as a personal person, cooking, going from a gas stove to, I live in a newer build, Emeryville, building, and I have an electric stove. And making that adjustment and actually having to get different cookware was a challenge. And that was for me personally, so I recognize it. And I do... And, and I do worry about the limitations it may put on, especially some of the smaller restaurants. I, I'm going to be honest, I'm, I'm pretty torn right now, just because I, I do see both sides, and I don't want to limit who can come here and who can thrive here, and also impact the, the quality of products people are able to produce in their restaurants. I'm, I'm, I'm really torn, because then overall, yes, we're focusing on trying to save our environment. So if maybe we have to miss out on some cuisines, is that a small price to pay to do our part to protect our earth that is in major crisis mode right now? So I'm, I'm, my, let's not limit what can happen in Emeryville versus, there won't be an Emeryville if the earth is dead. I'm, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm really, I mean, we'll get washed away to the ocean if, if we don't do what we need to do to, to protect our environment. I mean, this is, it's, it's hard for me right now as I'm, and also, you might just have to make a decision that I think I'm not super excited about, but it, it's what's best, and that's also sometimes what you have to do in these situations.
Very well said. Are there other members who wish to add additional comments? Member Donahue?
I just think that overall, it, the induction cooking really is the future. And, you know, we, there are alternatives. If you want to char something, just get your tank of hydrogen into your induction kitchen, fire up that hydrogen, you can flame stuff. Doing that for the occasional product that needs a little bit of flame, that's really greenhouse gas compliant in the best way. And I, I just think that we're not going to really have new restaurants built other than with gas, because it just costs more to build, and it's just a bad habit. People should, you know, we got a induction cooktop, and wow, do we use it for all kinds of things. It's just fabulous, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Let me start with the giving, this isn't a request to give direction. I have a couple of questions for staff, actually. I didn't give my comments. But my first question is, I noticed in the table that was provided as an attachment that the city does not include, we don't have a prohibition in office and retail space, but we did it in all the residential. Was there, I don't recall why we segregated that out, and maybe Nancy, you could remind me?
Yeah, so last year, we were looking at all occupancies, but the questions that came up from the stakeholders for the commercial buildings had not really been investigated and settled. So council moved forward on the residences just to sort of get that done last year, and asked staff to come back with a proposal for commercial. And that, and these questions that we brought tonight are kind of the last two remaining pieces before we're ready to do that.
Thank you so much for that additional reminding context. I was trying to figure out where this was fitting into that. Okay. Member Martinez?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you knew that Aaron Kim from East Bay Community Energy had their hand raised.
Yeah, unless someone has a specific question for Aaron, public comment is over. So if you have a question for Aaron, I, oh, her hand went down. Are there any other questions? Okay, so what I'd like to do is go to the first item, which is the research, the exemption in research, and just ask, is, what is the temperature of the council on that item? We got less discussion than theirs, we may have to discuss the second one more. So is everyone okay with carving out an exemption for research, the B spaces as it was defined, or do people wish to not give that exemption? I see three thumbs up. Diane is a thumbs down. I am going to be a thumbs up for that one, because that, my understanding, Nancy, just to confirm before I change my mind and join Diane on this, is that, that is required, we are allowing that exemption, but it is requiring full conduit for electrification? Is that correct?
That's true for anybody who's allowed to use gas. Yes, full, full electrification readiness. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so there's a, there's a majority that supports that exception. For the restaurant exemption, is a thumbs up? Please give a thumbs up if you want to give restaurants an exemption to the natural gas ban. Please give a thumbs down if you oppose. Okay, Member Welch? Okay, there's four members who do not want to give that exemption, so the direction to staff is, there's a majority support to carve out a space for the lab research, because the conduit is still required, but to not, for new restaurants, to not give an exemption to that. But we'll ask staff to go forward with developing and drafting the second part of this ordinance around retail office and business with those pieces of input. Nancy, are there additional pieces of input that staff need?
No, but I'll let you know that we'll be back shortly, so that we try to stay on track with the community development department's adoption of the 2022 code. So they'll go into effect together on January 1st, make things a little cleaner for our building staff.
Great. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So seeing no additional comment on this item, that will bring us to item 13, which is department head reports. Are there any department head reports tonight, Mr. Polter?
No, there is not. Thank you.
Okay. Item 14 is future agenda items. Are there any members who wish to put an item on a future agenda for discussion? I do have one item, which is to request that we have, we invite Townsend Public Affairs to the next council meeting to have a discussion about propositions 26 and 27, as they have significant consequences for card rooms, which is a huge revenue source for the city. I'd like to make sure that we are informed and we have the opportunity to take action in terms of a position on those. Is there a majority support to have that item on the next meeting? Yes, there's unanimous agreement, so we'll do that. Are there any other members who have future agenda item requests? Member, Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, this actually came up during our, our shoreline cleanup, but I request an agenda item in the future about banning restaurants from using styrofoam items. After spending three hours picking styrofoam out of the shoreline, let's just cut that off the source.
Don't you already have a county ban?
Do we not?
I think we do.
Why don't you start it up, 10-year-old styrofoam?
You're not, I don't think you're allowed to, yeah, well, the, people do bring styrofoam into the county, but, but, I mean, you could give direction to bring, to have staff bring back that information, but I'm, I'm pretty sure we don't allow styrofoam, because we've worked on this at Stop Waste, and, and we've talked about restaurants where they might have, you know, two shops, and one's in another county, and one's here, and, and they have just one order for their to-go packaging. What do they do? And, you know, so it's, I think it's old, it's old styrofoam. It just doesn't go away. Yep, breaks up.
I really appreciate that information. I, yes, we could bring that back as an information item if rest of council is, rest of that, but also I just trust Diane knows the latest on this.
Yes. It doesn't even need to be an information item. We could just have a staff, if, if we do not have a ban, staff can bring that information back.
That would be great.
Let's, let's do that. Let's agree that we'll have a, an action item, but for information purposes about the status of styrofoam bans, and if there's any space left. I will say there is a restaurant in the city where I have been given takeout in a styrofoam container. So that's why I have the question that Vice Mayor Medina has. But if the status of the law is that it's already illegal, and there's a mechanism for enforcing that, maybe we can just get a memo to us about that. We don't need an agenda item. If there is not, and there's a space to discuss further action by the city to prevent the proliferation of styrofoam in the community, then let's have the information item on agenda. And is there a majority support for that approach? Yes, there is. Okay, so that's the guidance on that. Are there any other items from members? Okay, seeing none. The time is 8:34. Madam Clerk, this meeting is adjourned. I wish everybody a lovely week. Take care, and we'll talk to you next time.